We will call our work session to order in the sense that there are two of us here.
Alderman Vaughn.
And staff is here. Alderman Vaughn is walking through the door. I know Al Alderman Sistrunk is going to be here. And so while we're waiting for a little more, for some more Aldermen to come in, we're going to, I'm showing this like you can see it. I don't know if you can or not, but we'll see. Anyway, this is going to be up on our website. And basically what it says is that our 2019 special election, which is occurring on May the 30th, we currently have absentee voting going on. We've had it going on since May the 10th. It is from 8:00 to 5:00 at the city clerk's office. And the last day for absentee voting will be May the 28th at noon. And then the deadline for mail-in ballots is May the 29th at 5:00 PM. Then the election is on May the 30th. And the polls are open from 7:00 to 7:00. And then the voting polls will be the usual voting polls for Ward 1. It's the National Guard Armory at Highway 12 and Industrial Road. Ward 2 is the Sports Plex at 405 Lynn Lane. Ward 3 is the Sports Plex at 405 Lynn Lane. Ward 4 is the Needmore Center, which is 610 East Gillespie. Ward 5 is Fire Station 3, which is at 389 and Garrett Road. And Ward 6 is Mount Piers Church at 840 North Jackson Street. And Ward 7 is the County Courthouse Annex at 108 West Main. So that's it. And we will be putting that on our website. So.
We're also open the next two Saturdays from May to June.
And that's, that's not on there. I should have, I'm sorry. Would you add that before we put that on the website? Is it on here? Oh, I didn't read it. I apologize. My bad. You were, you were ahead of me and I just skipped right on down to, to that. Okay, yes. And let me, let me add that we are open from Saturday, or on May the 18th, Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon. And then again, on May the 25th, Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon. So my bad for not reading the full script there. So anyway, on the website. All right. So we have a couple of items that we're going to take up before we get to the agenda. And that will be, first up is going to be Ms. Corbin and Mr. Havilin, unless Dr. Kim was going to do that. Is it, okay, all right. They're going to present to us an update on the Unified Development Code.
First, I want to say this, this is just kind of a brief overview of like progress presented for done through each section, not really got any.
Okay.
So since the last time we presented this, it was estimated 67% complete. And we're currently at 87% complete. And as you can see, if you can throw out a little bit, Joel, the percentages next to each subsection, when it's 99%, we kind of consider that complete. The 1% would be just kind of go over dramatic. Of the 39 subsections that are less than 99% complete, 56 of those are only lacking graphics. 23% of those need further input from other departments. And 21% of those are needing additional information added to them. We are also, in addition to this, in the process of finalizing and completing the placemat update and the zoning map update. But currently, those aren't ready to be released for this. We're getting pretty close to that point. What we, what we will be doing going forward, we'll be addressing items that need additional information from other departments first. Then we will get onto the graphics for each section. We're kind of thinking there's going to be approximately 80 different images that have been created, being inserted into the code. And then we're going to coordinate with other departments to finalize the sections that are taken of them. Once we've got the 99% complete mark on all the subsections, then we will create a copy of it for departmental review and give comments back to the departments and stuff related to their sections. And that will also be forwarded on the city attorney to check out his stuff. After comments from the departments and the attorneys, then we will have draft one ready to be publicized. That draft will be placed on the website along with dates for public input meetings. And then after the input meetings, it will be sent on for additional work sessions with boards and commissions to get comments and feedback from them. And then after that, it will be forwarded on the board of all and for public hearings. And then in addition to this, or you can go to the, in addition to this, we just wanted to point out again, the other sections in our current code that are going to have to be changed. On the left side is the actual chapter. On the right side is the stuff that will have to change. Of the stuff that will have to be modified, Chapter 2, Chapter 30, 38, 54, 58, 78, 94, 104, and 110. And this is just taking anything that's kind of a development standard that's following those chapters and move them into the Unified Development Code. And then Chapters 26, 62, 67, 98, 112, and Appendix A and B will be just completely moved into the Unified Development Code. But if you have any specific questions going forward, please let us know.
Anybody, anybody have any questions at this point? Do we have a rough timeline? Are we looking at getting it to Alderman and?
We're expected to start the public input meetings sometime in June.
So that would be good for the Alderman early June. That's our goal.
Okay.
For getting on the board.
But at the time of the public input, the draft will be released for people.
Right. No, and before you release it to the public, you need to get it out to the, to the Alderman. But then as soon as you do that, you know, they'll have a chance to look at it and chew on it a little bit. And then we'll put it out on the public website. So, okay. Anything? Anybody? Okay. Anything I was intelligent enough to ask a question about. So I let that one go. All right. Thank you very much. And I tried to, I tried to amend the work session this morning to add something. And they had locked me out of being able to make any changes. So I'm going to do it on paper. Edward, would you come forward and we have a, Edward has a video that I have asked him to show everybody that is the storm drains at Country Club Estates. And it was very eye-opening to me. So I assumed it would probably be eye-opening to y'all. It may not be, but you'll have to indulge. But it was, I thought it was fascinating. So Edward, I'll let you set up what it is.
Yeah. Way this initiated, as y'all know, there's a cluster of individuals from down there that come and speak about the flooding issues down there. And I had, we'd already kind of started figuring it out that there may be some issues with some blockage in that. We discovered a large log in that about two or three weeks ago after one of the big rain events. So we, we got with the utilities department and TV'd all the major lines through there. It's taken a couple of weeks to get that finished, but.
Well, we also had pictures of a couple of buckets, like construction buckets that were in there as well. So.
As well. So this is all sitting in a similar location. But this is just one video of one specific area and some of the things that we found.
So point out what it is, Edward, because you really can't.
Yeah, we're looking inside of a pipe. You can see obviously a lot of sedimentation and mud that's accumulated there. A lot of that is running off of individual job sites, our areas that are not stabilized from a vegetation standpoint, and obviously running down into the street, into the storm drain, and then into the collection pipes. This particular box that he's in is kind of a big junction where several pipes come together. So you can kind of see, we're able to look up at the circumstances of some of the pieces of the construction.
Edward, how long after a rain event?
This was less than a week after.
It's not this one. It's the next one.
See a lot of gravel.
Yep.
Possibly bricks. These are, these are.
This is the one. Look at that. Look at that.
So half to two-thirds of the capacity of that pipe was taken up with sediment roots, concrete. And I will say, Mr. Williams is here from the building department. They've taken a more proactive approach to, if you want to speak to that, on trying to make sure that those sites are managing their erosion runoff, sedimentation, pollution.
Well, I think it also highlights in ways that without having viewed it, I just didn't realize how much actually ended up getting in there. And so, you know, those, those erosion sites don't look like they're that bad when you see them. I mean, the silt fences, you know, kind of flatten out and fall down. But you just don't realize what happens. And in order to get rid of that, Edward, tell us what we got to do.
Yeah, we're going to have to, with the utilities vacuum and jet truck, to get these pipes cleaned out. So it's, it'll be a substantial amount of effort from the labor and equipment.
So we've impacted two departments now, having to go through, you know, double check this and then having the utilities to come in and try to help us get it cleared out. So that's the reason that Mr. Williams is taking a harder line. And I don't know if y'all heard from anybody on it, but that's part of the reason that we're taking a harder line on it and actually.
Just run through them just.
Okay, sure. Go right ahead.
Just real, real quick.
Question before you get started, Edward, do you think this might be going on in all the areas of rain that's going on?
If there's areas.
Do we have any intention of going and do other areas like this while there's flooding going on that?
Yes. If there's other areas, especially where there's a lot of construction sites, and Mr. Williams can talk a little bit about that. Some of these areas where there's a lot of disturbed ground, maybe any kind of additions, or several houses, new houses being built, or any kind of project going on is a, is a main contributor for this. Other areas, you know, we, we talked a little bit about maybe like on South Washington, but the majority of those, that stormwater conveying system is an open channel. So there, I guess you can see it, if there's a big sediment buildup in those, a lot easier than you can see these. We have walled, for example, if you want to continue to use that example, we have walled that entire culvert up under South Washington just to make sure that it wasn't clogged as well. But yeah, I think Mr. Williams is looking at all parts of town when he's looking at the erosion inspections as well.
Well, and this doesn't just wash away because it takes a high velocity to lodge it out. It's not like the flow is going to carry it with it because a lot of it's just lodged in there. So, okay. Joiner?
I think what, when they come in, we give them a road control permit. They'll go out and install a fence. We can make that inspection. And all is good at the time. We can't really tell what is going to happen until we get a test as far as the rain. So we've been, we've been real helpful. We've worked with them and they've, they've kind of halfway worked with us. But over time, it gets neglected, or they don't get maintained. And we seem to forget about it. And we really haven't put any teeth into it to motivate them to do that. They have no motivation because we're just nice to them and trying to get along. And, you know, we got plenty to do. But so this past week, we got together and we decided to, we would let Jeff cite them. And now with this citation, it's pretty stiff. Our penalty is, we're only going to penalize them for one day. And I went back and documented the next day. But it went on and on, and some still aren't fixed. So I'm just going to give you all a few quick little names of who I talked to and who corrected them. So you guys will know and ladies will know that we, if you get a call, I had Terry Jones on Turnberry. This is where the house is being built. Stuart Davis on Turnberry. Brian McCaskill on Sawgrass. Joe Couvion on Turnberry. Kane Overstreak on Turnberry. Bobby Grimes 211 Turnberry. A pool house on the House that did flood. Scott Young, College View, MSU. He's on Aiken Village on the, on the north side of College View. We've had a lot of trouble with our traffic through there and a lot of mud. Troy Dunham, IMS Builders up on Vista. He's on University, but his infraction down on Vista. He has an easement, has a, has a, has a construction entrance back to College View. So they've just, they've blown that straight up with mud. Lee Carson up in Red Bud. K&amp;B Construction on Royal Tune in Cypress Point. That's another Country Club Estate over in Phase 3, kind of in the middle of that Phase 3. Jerry McBride on Academy Hills. Corey Anthony on the West Point Road. So several of these have complied, but several have not. So Jeff has cited them. And we're going, the first court dates June 6th. And, and even with just this, it's gotten better. Because I've seen some of these others. We hadn't even talked to them. And they're out fixing their fence in the rain Saturday. Because they just heard something about when, you know, one heads down to buy the silt fence. Everybody knows about it. And so I'm, I'm hoping this will work. We not punished them what we could by any means. We're just trying to, you know, just slap on a risk and, you know, on a risk. And hopefully it'll be. But if it comes up with any, any of y'all, y'all feel free to call me or Dr. C.
Maybe we should have mandatory viewing of that, of the end result of what happened.
Edward, I've talked about a remedial thing is maybe get a little 15 or 20 minute session and show them before we issue that permit. But that's something we're going to work together on to try to be a little more proactive to educate them, you know, to just draw awareness to it. Now, I think this will make them aware. And then we won't be right unless we teach them a little something, how to do it.
Right.
Because they may or may not know.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Anything from Joiner before we let him go?
I agree. All right.
Anything from Joiner? I would just say that I think this is well overdue for this. And I agree with Edward that a major culprit is going to be from new construction sites where erosion control is, is paramount. But that post-construction is still, we're going to have, we still have a significant amount of erosion that's coming off of areas that aren't under construction. I know y'all just recently cleaned out one of the Green Street planters on Nash Street. There is significant amount of sedimentation that comes off of, say, the hill for the Catholic Church. And that's all, for the most part, vegetated and not a construction site. And so we have a lot of those, I guess to Alderman Vaughn's point, there's probably in some of these areas where we may not be able to go in and rip up a pipe. But as part of that proactive management, if we could begin to TV as many of the problematic lines and find out what we're dealing with, so we can figure out how to way to address it, I think is, would be great.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I think that's probably in the works. Terry, I know that you're the only one with a real, real live TV truck. And getting hold of that, I think we kind of all fight over it. All the departments fight over it. But is there a chance that we could have it dedicated for a couple of days to do that kind of thing? Make those arrangements?
Actually, Edward and I and his staff and mine are, we're going to meet next week to try to look at a long run schedule. And you're exactly right because we're pushing real hard to try to do as much investigation on our sewer bronies. And that means in, I mean.
I find that every line.
That's something you rent? Have we ever looked at renting one?
They do. They've actually got services out there. And that might be a consideration of how we, how we could complement that because, and then maybe there's some ways that we can up our production rate so we can look at a little bit more feet per day, I guess is what I'm trying to measure.
Oh, God. All right. Well, y'all work it out. But, you know, if we need to rent one.
But that's really an excellent tool that we need to, you know, it needs to be running pretty much all the time.
Right.
So we'll, we'll support that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. Well, we can roll into the, into the agenda. We have minutes. Chris, you're satisfied with the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to consent on, consent on minutes. I don't know that I'm going to have any comments. Now this, oh, yep, there you are, back over there. I'm not, no one to introduce this time around. Does anyone on the board have anything they want to add from a agenda perspective for comments? Okay. We've got two public appearances. Scott Nannadod, they are the ones who, who we're talking about flooding, which is a part of this. And then Ms. Latala Harris from J.O. King, the loss of funding. For those of you who may not be aware, Dr. Butler lost funding for the program, for the Families First Program. And they funded it through the end of May. And so now we're looking at another funding source, not the city, but Allison Bueller is trying to put a funding source together. And has one that appears we can at least go for a couple more months, June and July, while perhaps we find other funding sources and sort our way through that. But that's going to come up a little bit later on in, on the agenda under Mayor's Business here in just a second. So that's what, that's, that's what that's about. Public hearing, obviously, this is our second public hearing on ordinance change for Board of Adjustments and Appeals. So we'll be having that. And then this is under Mayor's Business. It's the contract, and it happened during y'all's term, the 20th, December 2016. There was a contract between the city, actually, it was a four-party contract. We signed off on it. But it was between the city and the school district and Create or Soar Foundation. And then it was signed off by, also by Dr. Joan Butler. But the termination opportunity or requirement is between the city and the school district. So I sat, I sat down with Dr. Passant. And based on the fact that they lost their funding, the school district is, is willing to mutually agree to release us from the obligation of the contract. And that, and we're really willing to release them from a six-month termination notice so that they can go ahead and move forward, so that we can get some programs in there and perhaps see what the future of it might be. But, you know, they don't have funding any longer. And so six months would, you know, mean that we'd just be sitting there for six months. And perhaps this way, if we terminate the agreement mutually, then we can go ahead and arrange for folks to use it. So that's going to be part of that. And I would hope that that's not a, not a problem. So is that a consent for, is everybody okay with that? On consent?
Leave it off.
Leave it off? Okay.
And they are, the contract that's referenced, that'll be in the packets?
Yeah, it should be. Is it in, is it in there?
Just wanted to make sure that.
I did not have, I did not have a signed copy. There was not a signed copy in the minutes.
Right.
But that's, the contract should be in there. So yes. And it's the last clause that states the ability to mutually terminate.
Number six. That's seven. There we go.
Yeah, number seven. Notwithstanding the foregoing. So.
Okay.
And that's just between the two of us. And Dr. Passant has said he was, he was amenable to that. So, all right. So under that item, then we have a board business, which is amending the ordinance for, for that since we're having a public hearing. Well, not a good idea to put that on consent. All right. And then we have consideration of advertising for the Ward 3 position. Tom Walker is rolling off and I don't believe wishes to apply for, for the next, for another term. So we'll just, this is advertising. So we can put that on, on consent, no problem. And, and that is Ward 3. David's not here, but I'll try to remember to remind him of that. And then we have travel for Court Clerk Jody Ho to attend the summer training program, which is a mandatory training program. So consent for that. And then we have renewal of a ditch spraying contract with Chempro. Edward, anything to add to that? Just, it's our usual.
Same company, same now. Here is.
Okay. All right. Consent for that one? And do you want to talk about the West Side Drive sidewalk project?
I have the plans that y'all like.
Okay, if you would, please.
Yeah. And I think it might be easier to, to kind of just show you where, where everything is and kind of what we had in mind. Originally, when we did the park overlay, this part of the capital improvement funds, this roadway and then this parking lot was intended to be repaved as part of that. But due to its, you know, somewhat inferior views and with the possibility of this part of the park being repurposed and thought about for new things going on, it was, it was a thought that you can reuse this money here to provide better pedestrian connectivity to the park. And so right now, of course, we have the new sidewalks around the park here. And we have sidewalks along Long Street to this point. About three or four years ago, Alderman Vaughn, is that about right, we built a sidewalk on this side of the street from Reed Road to basically Frontier Street, right here. This is the area where the new, actually, both of these parcels, where that new subdivision is being proposed at this time.
What's the name of that subdivision? Is it West Side something? What is the name of that subdivision? Alderman?
The one they're going to fit, the one that we.
Yeah, the new one. What's the name of that subdivision?
Oh, he named it. I saw it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't remember. Go ahead.
I can't remember. I saw it.
I'm sorry.
There is some sidewalk on the south side in front of the Conacre Development here. But the problem is, it's not ADA compliant. There's a lot of steps in it. And there are a good number, at least two, maybe three, that I'm aware of, Alderman Vaughn might be no better, of people in wheelchairs that are trying to get to the park. And that was one of the requests. We spent a lot of time, I think we, we explored two, maybe three different options. You know, we looked at coming around the park, through this green space, basically to try to connect this sidewalk that was built to the, the park, this area in an ADA way. And ultimately, what we decided is the most cost-effective, and we think the most highly used, is to put it on the north side of West Side Drive. And that's what these plans show. It will extend from here to here. Everything will be ADA compliant. There is one section that we had to get a variance from because this driveway is so steep. But we also are making connection to BrickFire because a lot of the after-school kids at summer program come over to the park as well. So it'll provide a safe pedestrian way to them. And so that, that is the plans that we have here. It's five foot wide path. You can see it's off of the road here. And then kind of veers back to the BrickFire property in the store, back closer to the roadway. We're having to replace some of these driveways and then have an ADA ramp here at Long Street. So that's, that's the project. And believe it or not, the, the cost of those, you know, taking the funding from this and replacing it that, when we got quotes back, they were within $500 of each other.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's neat.
Yeah. So it's, it's pretty much a wash from a, from a construction standpoint.
Edward, can you, do you mind going back to the, where you said the ramp is at Long Street? Can we look at that?
Yeah.
Right here.
So when you say ramp, are you just talking about the, the return to the tackle strip? Or is it truly a ramp that goes from that driveway down?
No, everything is going to be less than 5%.
Perfect.
That's what I want.
That's what I wanted to say. If there's a way to grade this so we don't have a ramp, then that would be what we should do.
Yeah. And I, and when I said ramp, I just meant curb cut.
Got you.
Yeah. We, we already have a curb cut here. So this is ADA accessible. Of course, the bus stop is right here on this side of the street. So it just provides, yeah, from an ADA standpoint, a good across either direction.
Thank you. And BrickFire, Alderman Vaughn, I know you worked with Ms. Taylor to make that.
Mr. Taylor.
Oh, Mr. Taylor. I'm sorry. Okay. To make them happy with that. So that should be beneficial to them.
Yeah, one idea.
Good. Okay.
We got an easement from Mr. Taylor. They're really excited about the project.
Good.
So that I think they see the value in that for sure.
Okay. Good. That's great. All right. Any issue with making that one consent?
Consent.
Okay.
Can we leave it off so that it will get a little more attention Tuesday night than it would here with the public and the media and that sort of thing?
Okay.
And that's not in any way challenging a vote. It's just an opportunity to educate a little more.
Okay. Okay. Well, we can make a point of doing that. All right. And then the change order of the Lynn Lane widening project. Edward, you want to add anything about that one?
This is just essentially a final payment summary change order to address all the quantities that either underran a little bit. The primary cause of the, the price difference was we used a different pedestrian push-button manufacturer. One that was a little bit more expensive, but the several utilities had experience with in other parts of the town. So everything was consistent. And then the asphalt overran a little bit due to some tie-ins on existing roadways at intersections. And we did some work at industrial park road intersection to make the drainage work a little bit better. So that was the main cause for those.
Are we still holding some contingency money?
We are holding, we're reducing.
Retainage, I guess.
Retainage down to two and a half percent.
Okay.
And we'll release that once all the, a bunch less items are done, which include full vegetation establishment.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any issue with that one on consent? Okay. Garber Engineering is a consultant for the Linkage Tap Project. This is the one that we're working with, with MSU. This is the latest, or the last large funding that we got from MDOT. $588,000, I believe it was, for the linkage to run into, into campus along in front of the Hampton Inn there. And it'll go into the amphitheater. You can pull that up. There it is. Yeah. And we, we sat down with Amy Tuck. And of course, Mr. Taggart, Commissioner Taggart was instrumental in getting us those funds. So we are the lead on that one, but it's between MSU, MDOT, us, and the county. And so we've got the same partners who are working on the project along Loxley Way. But we're taking the lead on this one as opposed to the county taking the lead on this one. So, anything else, Edward?
Yeah, this is just the next step in the process. We have done the funds obligated by June of 2020, which might seem a long way away, but in kind of an MDOT project timeline, that's very, very quick. So the next step is to hire a consultant. And then we will try to fast track and expedite this project so we can get that obligation timeline met.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Everybody good with consent on that one? Okay. Thank you. All right, claim stock that we have, and then April financial statements, any issue with consent on those? Okay. Property insurance renewal, Lisa, these are the same guys that we currently use, so it's just a renewal, right? And we went out for bid last summer?
Yes.
Right, so this is, I guess, kind of year two?
People say one-year contract with one-year option.
One-year renewal, okay, all right. Any issues with that one? Okay. Human resources, we've got two part-time aircraft linemen, the, the guys that we had have graduated, so we need to advertise for two more. So stop me if y'all want to do something other than consent on these. Temporary full-time driver in sanitation and environmental services. Remind me now, Calvin's not here, yes, remind me, did we lose some money?
We have an employee that's out.
That's right.
With some medical issues.
Okay.
Or considered here at times.
Okay.
So I don't know exactly how long it's gonna be.
Okay, all right, so. Temporary full-time deputy, deputy court clerk, we have hired Ms. Hoag, so this was, this is to fill in that, that slot. And then three maintenance workers in Strawberry Utilities. Any illumination on that one now in terms of reasoning?
We have some employees that have left, so we're backfilling.
Okay, all right, so no, no new positions, always backfill, or all of them are backfill, okay. Authorization to hire Ms. Holmes as the deputy court clerk, oh, that's the, that's the one that was the replacement. I apologize, I flip-flopped them. The temporary is, is temporary, the other one is the replacement for Ms. Hoag's position, so. And then Ms. Wiggins is part-time receptionist and that is, we lost our, one of our receptionists in parks, so. And then more, flip the page. Equipment operator in the Strawberry Utilities Department. And training chiefs in fire department. And entry-level firefighters, and those came for the, from the interviews prior to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then facilities ground supervisor, we had someone who, this is, these two were new from the original agenda that was sent out yesterday. We had someone who resigned this morning. And so since we're in the peak season, we need to go ahead and get it on the agenda. And so I authorized NAM to go ahead and put it forward. And then one seasonal maintenance worker who declined the position, he was, he was authorized to be hired and he declined the position. So both of these are. Declined the position, oh, who resigned, I'm sorry.
Shane McMillan.
So both of these are kind of timely in the sense that we need them based on all we got going on. All right, facility use agreement with Shopwave Aquatic Club, you're good with that, Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
So that agreement is, is acceptable, okay? Baseball pitching mounds, you want to elaborate on that at all, Gary?
Sure, well, state baseball tournament coming up June 7th through 9th, which will get us fully stocked for that. But also, as Autumn Walker kind of touched, we have a lot of need for additional practice space. So we have a lot of cases where baseball teams are practicing at softball fields. We currently don't have enough temporary mounds to go around so that we can adequate the practice the way we need to. So these will be purchased, used for regular leagues and also tournaments.
Okay, okay, would these transition, well, and I asked that, what's their life? Is it a long life?
Uh, so the ones we have in stock, excuse me, I say stock now, the one we have, the ones we have on hand now are four or five-plus years old and certainly getting worn down, but they're also not as high quality as the ones we're proposing to purchase.
Okay.
So the hope is five-plus years.
Okay, all right, so they'll transition, okay, good, okay. Any issues with that being on consent? Okay, and then resurfacing, I'm excited about this one. Resurfacing the basketball courts, the tennis courts, they're in pretty bad shape. And I was out there with the basketball courts the other day, the other day, and the guys who were playing, there was, there must have been 15 guys playing half-court ball. And I was visiting with them and they said, they said something about, you know, playing and having a good time. And they, and I said, well, y'all gonna really like it when we resurface the basketball courts. And they all went, no, no, last time you did it, we all slipped, slipped down and fell for, you know, for months before we ever got it worn out. And apparently, all we did last time was just paint concrete, so no wonder it was slick. But this is a surface that will allow them to have some traction and everybody's not gonna be falling down all over the place because we just went out and painted concrete. So I thought that was, anyway, I thought that was kind of telling. So I'm excited about these getting done, so. Any issues with those going on consent? Okay, so we have police department, a DARE conference in Biloxi, any issues with that? And then Mississippi Command College for some of our folks here, any issues with that? And then motorcycle training in DeIverville. And then Khalid Commission for, for them coming into town to us get accredited again. I'm, I'm always excited about us being accredited. I think that's one of those real kudos, feathers in the, in the police department cap. Okay, Terry, your stuff is always tough. I want you to talk about this one so that everybody will know what's going on, please. The, the scanner, the OCR scanner?
OCR scanner.
Yes, sir.
Basically, several years ago, we moved through a lockbox mailing over to Birmingham for processing all of our checks through SEDC. And that was based on, for anybody that requires a check from us from New Orleans, they can just do that process. Technology is now one of the planned.
This would do is allow us to bring that process back here. And so be instead of mailing the checks to Birmingham, it'd be mailed our local office here. This is a high-speed processor, so we can do it with very little minimal impact on staff, which is one of the challenges that we dealt with when we moved it the other direction, one at a time. So this, this right here, what that does will allow us to, to make that move, probably two steps. And hopefully, assuming the board approval, then we can have this up and running by the end of August, September timeframe so we can start processing back here.
I'm pretty excited about that because that brings it back in-house and we're not having stuff going to Birmingham and coming back again, so I think that's, I think that's really good.
Leave it off a sense so we can spread it to the public.
Sure.
So leave it off a sense so you can be as wide to them, they will understand.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, and we have proceeding with Bluefield Project, Garber Engineering, the low bid, any issue with that? Okay, SEDC online billing payment and processing service. Terry, is that, that's, that's not tied to this other, is it?
Which one?
The number three, is that tied to this one, to number one at all?
Number three, that's the one that needs to come off. That was another factor, what we're trying to do, just so you, since you've had. Part of that is a service that allows people to do online banking, writes checks, comes through. There's a huge delay in that sometimes.
Okay.
This speeds that process, but we've not finalized the agreement.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll show that removed. Okay, and then we have a line design and staking class, so training, and then source of supply, which is our usual stuff. And that is pretty much it for us. So anyone have any questions or things that they want to talk about before we call it an afternoon? And hopefully, we'll have a successful sweep with the baseball team.
And softball plays tonight.
And softball plays tonight. And we have. And we have baseball tomorrow, no, today and tomorrow.
No, Saturday.
Saturday and Sunday, okay. How many teams are we expecting?
Around 40.
Around 40, which is how many people?
400.
All right, just, yeah, 20,000, 1,500.
400 players.
400 players, and you got family to go with.
And two families.
Okay, and that's, and that's that multiplication factor that makes such a difference for.
Eight-year-olds aren't driving.
Yeah, is that, is that baseball, is it coach pitch? What's the age of coach pitch?
Uh, coach pitch, yeah, there is some coach pitch being waived, so we also have the 11th, I think it's the 8th.
Yeah, just say.
Excuse me, it's the 9th, 11th, and 13th, I think, this weekend.
Okay, cool.
Not 11th, well.
Okay.
Not our 11th, it is.
Thank you all, enjoyed it, and y'all have a great weekend.